Light Industrial District. This property is located on the north side of Van Horn Street, east of Ohio Street, and addressed as 1127 Van Horn Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application's been filed by Derek Bernhardt on behalf of NatureScape Lawn and Landscape. And the property we are referring to this evening is in -- located in the Fairway subdivision, which encompasses the north side of Van Horn Street, east of Ohio Street. And that property was originally platted in 1939, and most of the homes that were constructed there and other buildings predate the city's building records. Based on our research, we determined that the eastern portion of this subdivision was not annexed until 1967. And at the time of annexation, the property was brought into the city with a zoning classification of heavy industrial. And at the time of annexation, Thomas and Osterberg Masonry Contractors were using this property as a contractor's storage yard. And then a portion of this property has historically been used by the Salina Improvement Company. And so, in 1977, when this property was comprehensively rezoned and remapped, this neighborhood was zoned our single-family residential in an attempt to preserve and protect its remaining residential character. And so, the result of that was making the Thomas and Ostenberg Masonry and other existing businesses into non-conforming uses. And what that means is they continue to operate, but if you are more than 50 percent damaged by fire or flood or other natural disaster, then you lose your grandfathered status and you can't rebuild. And so, the applicant in this case purchased the property in July 2015 from the Thomas family. At that time, we informed the applicant that the contractor's storage yard use was a grandfathered use and could be continued on the property. But Mr. Bernhardt took note of the fact that lots six, seven, and eight to the west of this property on Van Horn were rezoned to I-2 in January. And so, he has decided to pursue a change in zoning classification for his property. And so, this request is to rezone all three lots identified, lots 11, 12, and 13 to I-2 light industrial. If this request is approved, then it would make the use of this property conforming and would allow him to rebuild. If the improvements were more than 50 percent damaged, it also would make it easier for him to obtain financing because he wouldn't have to worry about being a non-conforming use. So, with -- I'm pretty sure their intentions were good from a planning standpoint, but when this area was comprehensively rezoned and remapped in 1977, there were a number of single-family homes in this area. And so, the -- to protect that, the property was zoned our single-family residential. This resulted in the existing businesses being grandfathered. And since that time, as we observed previously, that zoning has been chipped away at kind of lot by lot or group by group. And so, similar to Woodland and Prospect, this side of Van Horn has a mix of both residential and industrial-type uses. Historically, it was more residential than the other streets, but there's been no recent construction or residential redevelopment in the area. And the applicant has no interest in developing or redeveloping this property residential. And so, we are in agreement that the trend in this area has been away from residential. We've got railroad tracks and I-3 zoning to the south and a beer distributing company, which makes us relatively unattractive for residential development. And you approved a recommended approval of a change to I-2 just up the street in January. So, the question for you is whether this property is more suitable for future residential use or conversion to commercial or industrial use. As we look at the neighborhood, there's four remaining residences. There's two businesses. There's kind of an undefined storage lot at the end of the street. There's a beer distributor on the south side of the street. And farther south across from that is the Bus Boomin Row Construction Yard. And so, what we've observed is that the presence of several large vacant lots, the mix of uses, the unpaved streets, the closeness to Ohio seems to make this an attractive area for small businesses such as contractors' offices and storage facilities. The neighborhood seems to have tolerated the mix of uses fairly well. We tend not to get complaints about the usage, but primarily about trucks going up and down the gravel streets at speeds that are not compatible with residential setting. So, the question for you is whether the nature of the applicant's use is compatible with the development in the surrounding area and whether the I-2 zoning would have negative impacts on adjacent residential properties. There's water, sanitary sewer, but no defined storm drainage system for Van Horn. Van Horn is a public street, although it doesn't meet our current public street standards. It has been considered to be an open, improved public street for building permit purposes. It is publicly maintained by city crews, and it does provide access to homes and existing So, the street just kind of disappears as you get to the east end and kind of fades into the railroad tracks. There's no cul-de-sac or anything there, so the street sort of just ends. Probably notably compared to past plans is the city's current future land use plan shows this as being part of an employment area. And that classification would tend to support the I-2 zoning as a land use. And the employment land use category is not really designed to intend or intended to encourage or accommodate residential development. So, we looked at that, this, and provided you with a summary of possible findings. We found that this property meets the minimum dimensional requirements for an I-2 development lot. It does have frontage on a public street. It is adjacent to existing I-3 zone property on the south, and there are other contractors' offices in the vicinity. And the property is not suitable for residential development because of the surrounding environment. And the I-2 zoning does conform with the future land use designation, which is employment area. And so, we believe that this request would allow a pre-existing or already existing non-conforming contractor's storage yard, which is unlikely to be developed or redeveloped residentially, to remain as a productive use. And we think this is consistent with the trend that we are seeing east of Ohio in this area. So, we would recommend approval of the request. In the alternative, you could recommend denial based on any alternative findings that you come up with, or you could postpone consideration of this request if you'd like staff to provide you with additional information before you make a decision. So, with that, we'd be open to any questions that you have of staff, and then we can hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there questions for staff? Yes, sir.
Since the comprehensive plan has zoned that as a commercial area, why don't we change the whole commercial -- change it all to commercial? There may be an advantage to the residents there that it may increase their home -- land value.
Mr. Boxer suggested that at the last go-around, and I'll give you the same answer I gave him and the city commission. We -- if we did that, we could very well be faced with individuals coming back before you, asking to rezone their property back to residential so that they could obtain refinancing or mortgage. The concern is, when you have non -- when you make non-conforming residences, is that mortgage lenders tend not to want to make loans on a home. If the home is damaged by fire or flood or something, then it's lost as a home. So, we actually had a case of a lot on Woodland that was zoned industrial, and then it was a home. And the owner came back before this commission and applied to rezone it to our single-family residential because without that zoning, they could not get mortgage financing to refinance their home.
Did that person agree to change it to a commercial zoning to begin with?
No.
They don't get to agree.
It -- there was a -- there was a greenhouse operation that was down at the end of Woodland. And it's kind of off the screen here, but it was all I-2. And there was a home right next to that, and the greenhouse part of that closed, and the owner had the home, which was right here, and it was included in the rezoning for the greenhouse. And they were unable to get financing for that home because it wasn't zoned I-2, and the lenders would not make a loan on a home that was zoned I-2. So, there's nothing that procludes you from doing that, and you have the authority to initiate that, and it can be done. But our opinion is that would not be immediately beneficial to those owners for two reasons. One, there are some places, if you could go back to zoning, John, where we have residences that are actually kind of compactly put together. So, if you make this all I-2, then you're -- you could end up with somebody who's a dedicated homeowner who gets sandwiched by businesses that today is sandwiched by residences, and then the other parts deal with the financing. But that all being said, if the planning commission wanted to initiate that change or the city commission wanted to initiate that change, it could be done. But the people who are owner occupants of homes may not see that as a positive because it -- if they don't have an interested business buyer, then they would probably have difficulty selling their home as a home because the new buyers would have trouble getting financing.
So, maybe the owners of those residences may want to initiate a change in zoning?
Well, what we have -- what we have done is, and that's why the map looks like it does today, we have waited for the property owner to initiate the change. So, if you could go back to zoning, John. So, that -- I don't think that's the -- we had -- so, the difference is right here. This was all yellow right here, except for this. This was rezoned in 1999. It was residential. That piece got rezoned. And then this piece got rezoned here, and this is the request here to rezone that. So, that is certainly a choice. The choice we have made as a staff is to wait for individuals to come forward with rezoning requests. Again, that being said, if the planning commission wants to do a blanket rezoning of this entire area, that can be done. You have the authority to initiate that.
Are the residents aware of their opportunity to change their zoning?
Most of them are. We had, in 2000, we had a number of public meetings in this area, and ironically enough, we had an opportunity for community development block grant funds to enhance this, not as a commercial, but as a residential area. So, we had the opportunity to get funds, to pave the streets, to put in new water and sewer lines and improve the storm drainage. But the residents who lived there wanted to be left alone and did not want the city coming in and improving those things.
Any -- thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Just one real quick, but a comment to Commissioner Botha. I understand, and my purpose of doing this, I didn't want to have to come back again and again and again. But as far as the property owners knowing, this is a public hearing, and so my assumption is whenever we were considering rezoning these three lots, that those adjacent property owners were notified about that. So, yes, they know that it's happening, so it's not like it's something that surprises them. I understand the financing piece of it. I'm not sure that that changes my opinion, but I do understand that at least. Are the two lots -- excuse me, are lots nine and 10, are they currently occupied? Are those two, even though they're residential, are those homes currently occupied?
The applicant might know better than ourselves that the owners have stayed the same. Right here, they're -- the Hill family owned those.
All right.
The applicant might know better than we would in that.
Other questions for staff? If not, we'll hear from the applicant. If you approach, please, your name, address?
Derek Bernhardt with NatureScape, 2763 Melanie Lane. As far as your question for the neighbor, I am aware to the neighbor. Terry Hill is to the west. We do have a real good relationship with him. We have an eight-foot fence in between the property that does have a vine that they love, and we don't let us touch it. So, we leave it, but they like it. Like I said, they have no problem with it. The neighbor next to him, I haven't seen anyone there. If there is somebody living there, I don't see him at all. And as far as just a couple other points I wanted to point out, in the report, there was just a line I just wanted to correct. They hadn't mentioned financing to expand the business, and that really wasn't the case. It was just for any future banking issues, if it were to get destroyed more than 50 percent, where I can't rebuild and I'm stuck paying on a mortgage for however many more years not being able to rebuild. That's kind of the main reason I'm here. We don't have any intentions to expand or add on or anything like that. It's just mainly kind of protecting our investment. And I also just wanted, if you notice the pictures, we did put some before pictures up there of when we did inherit the building, and then some after pictures. We did clean everything up on the property. It's not such an eyesore anymore. The fence prior was out into the street, right on the very, very edge, and we've brought that back to the building. We've, like I say, we've made an attempt to clean it up real well and make it look a little better in that area. And then the lots to the east belongs to the Body and Mechanic Shop on Prospect to the north, and he kind of just uses it as additional car storage back there. I think that's all I had. Dean kind of hit all my points that I had in there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bernhardt. Does anyone have questions for the applicant?
No, my only comment is, is I went back there to look, and your property is, does look much neater, let's put that way, cleaner, organized.
Thank you.
I don't know where you went with all that stuff.
It took a year, but we're getting there.
Yeah, and I was going to second that, too. Just the pictures that we were given in the packet, while it was very clear difference.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Then we'll close the public hearing. If there's no one else to speak on this particular application and bring it up here for further Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions? Certainly.
I move that we approve application number Z-17-4, change of zoning from residential to I-2 light industrial.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application Z-17-4, which is a change in zoning from residential to light industrial. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I was just going to let the applicant know that will go before the city commission on June 5th for first reading of an ordinance. That would change the zoning.
Our second public hearing item is application number M-17-6 filed by the Salina City Commission requesting an amendment of the future land use map of the Salina comprehensive plan to change future land use designation at the south of Fifth Street and Prescott Avenue from future urban residential to future hospital medical.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, we had a rezoning request for the property surrounding the Salina Ortho Clinic on South Santa Fe. And the one piece of the property that was not owned by Salina Ortho Properties was the remaining residence at 543 South Santa Fe. And then next to that, which is a lot addressed as 117 East Prescott, which formerly had a house on it, and neither of those lots were included in the hospital medical land use area when that was adopted in 2004. And so, you had recommended approval of a zoning change from R-3 to hospital medical for this property as well as property on the east side of Fifth Street. And we pointed out at the time that Lot 16 at the corner was designated on the plan as urban residential and not hospital medical. And so, even though hospital medical is identified as a potential zoning district under the urban residential land use category, the city commission initiated this as a cleanup item. And so, really, the only property owned by Salina Ortho Properties that's not designated as future hospital medical is this lot. And so, with the change in zoning to hospital medical, changing this to the hospital medical land use designation would more closely conform with the zoning classification that was just approved. And so, your role when looking at the comprehensive plan is to decide what its vision is for the future development of this corner lot, and is it more closely related to the hospital medical land use area to the north and east, or more closely related to the urban residential area south of Prescott? And we think that this lot is similar in character to the area associated with Salina Regional Health Center facilities, more so than the neighborhood south of Prescott. If you change the land use classification, it would more closely conform with the zoning. And changing it to hospital medical would still respect the current boundaries of the South Santa Fe Historic District. So, your options today would be to reaffirm the existing comprehensive plan and make -- recommend no change be made, or you could recommend that the future land use map be changed. And so, the current boundary runs like this, goes around this lot and over. And if you recommend the change, then we would incorporate that lot right there into the future land use area. So, with that, we would be open to any questions that you had. But our view is that once the demolition of the house was approved and the zoning designation is changed, we think an amendment to the future land use designation could and should be justified.
Are there questions for staff?
Dean, I had one. I was -- it relates in a way to Mr. Bernhardt mentioning the vine fence on one side that separates the neighbor. And I asked this partly because I know we had a recent discussion about the location of the fence on -- of the house on the corner just to the west of this lot. There are some trees that at least provide a boundary between, to a visual boundary, between what might be a parking lot or not. Do you know whether the trees are on the residential side of the lot or on the ortho property side?
They straddle the line, but the parking lot plan has an eight-foot buffer between any paving and the west property line. So, the plan is, and you'll see that some out in the middle are being removed, but the plan is to basically clean up, prune, but otherwise retain this vegetative boundary between the two properties.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, we've had some discussions, and without getting into the whole property discussion, what we've looked to do, working with the design review board, is to -- there's some consideration given for the clinic to essentially erect an identical wrought iron type fence that would extend along the south and go out closer to Santa Fe, so you'd have a continuous fence line. And we persuaded the design review board that would be counterproductive to have a solid wood fence in close proximity to an existing wrought iron fence with a small gap in between, which would make for difficult maintenance, things like that. So, we're going to work with the clinic to basically have, take advantage of the natural vegetation and use that as a buffer as opposed to removing trees and putting up fences.
And I presume the landowner is very happy with that?
As far as we know, we had the landowner and their attorney present at about four or five different meetings, but they were not at the meeting for the design review board where they finalized the design of this parking lot. So, but the plan, the plan that the design review board approved was to try to make as much use of the existing vegetation as a buffer and preserve it and try to avoid solid wood fences if we can.
Other questions for staff?
I'll make this real painless, but I have to say it. I understand that the house on the corner of Prescott and Aaron on the north?
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe and Prescott on the northeast corner of that intersection is somehow protected for perpetuity. But I still think that it ought to be, that corner ought to be squared off, and it all ought to be hospital or medical designation and not keep doing this little block at a time, block at a time. The house could remain there until there isn't another tomorrow, but at least the map would show that it's part of the medical area rather than a residential area because it's not. But that's my, that's my concern, is that we're, again, we're just nibble, 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 and we keep coming back and doing these things rather than just making it nice and neat. But don't need a response. That was just kind of a comment.
That's not a question?
No.
Thank you. Is there an answer? Is there a response to that from someone?
Well, of course, there's a response to that, why it was not done.
I think we've heard this response already. I think I asked that question.
There was an agreement entered into by the hospital where they agreed that they would not acquire property within the designated historic districts. And so, they have essentially.
I'm not asking them to buy it, or I'm just.
But it's for their purpose we're doing this.
Is that a binding agreement? I mean, the.
It's not a binding agreement. It's a good. It's a good faith agreement.
I just, just one other observation is that we have many situations where muddied interests or whatever are involved, and they have a right to personal property and to do with what they want. And so we're balancing that line between.
This is not even a zoning. This isn't changing the zoning. It's not even, you know, when we were talking about the parking lot, the parking lot has nothing to do with this. This is a comprehensive plan.
I see what you mean.
And I can't understand how comprehensive plans that are supposed to have some balcony view of development get so carried away that we have little corners like this. Balcony views tend to have nice, straight slick lines outlining an area. And zoning takes care of these little spots. But I'm just being a contrarian, so.
Historic preservation, which is another arm and another branch that has a purpose, too. If there's no other questions, is there anyone from, are you speaking on this one also? No, are you involved in this? How? Step up here and tell me, I want to hear this. Because you're out there acting like you know everything about it.
Talking about the landscape, so I don't know if I can clarify. I had the landscape plan for it. It's just, it's been submitted, but nothing's been approved yet.
I see.
I don't know if you had any questions on where.
And your name again?
Derek, I'm sorry, Derek Bernhardt. On the, oh, the line on the rear of the property, they were talking about, now those trees are on the hospital property on the backside. And currently, they're wanting to take those out and replace those with juniper-type trees to go along the backside that would still screen, but it'd be year-round screening. All those trees, they're hitting the end of their life. They're starting to break, fall down. So I think they want to do the backside. But the other side, they were going to keep all the existing trees on the, be the north side of the house property. We're going to keep all those existing to use that as a buffer. And then, like Dean said, there's going to be the grass area between there and the parking itself. So there'll be a nice little buffer in between, too. But no, I just, when you guys were talking about the back, I just, kind of, that was the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bernhardt.
No problem.
I wish you success on your bid for work there.
What we find is that evergreen plantings provide year-round screening, where if you rely on deciduous trees, you don't get the year-round benefit, so.
We have many experts in this room.
We do.
No one else from the public? We'll close the public hearing part and bring it back up here for discussion and a motion?
Still moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve application number M-17-6, which is to change the future land use designation of a particular site at Prescott and South Fifth Street. All those in favor, vote aye, please. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any administrative items?
For administrative items, I'll just remind the commission that both the Planning Commission and the City Commission have the authority through majority action. If you want to initiate the further downzoning of what that neighborhood east of Ohio, you can initiate that as an application and see what the reaction to that is. You can also do what the City Commission did, which was they initiated the cleanup action on this Prescott corner. But if you felt so moved to do the same thing with the Santa Fe corner, you are within your purview to do that. So we just want to remind you that if you have a motion with a majority, you can initiate downzonings or zoning changes of your own volition. We do have a June 6th meeting scheduled. As I discussed with Mr. Botha last night, the City Commission, after getting some input from the public, their own thoughts, and some further legal research by legal counsel, would like to possibly find a way to accommodate what we would refer to as off-site real estate, off-site garage sale, and off-site, which would include open house type signs. The downside of that is that there is no way to really do that without saying that any type of off-site advertising is permitted. But the way that it's being looked at being addressed is to have fairly strict time, place, and manner and size limitations so that if it's only allowed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday between these hours or whatever, that it will make that unlikely to have just general advertising signs during that timeframe. But since there was not a actual amendment drafted up and ready for them to do something with, they referred it back to you so it'll appear back on your agenda, we will work with the legal staff to prepare a supplemental amendment to what you've already recommended for you to look at and give us your input on. And then, once you've made your recommendation as to what you think of that or don't think of that, then it will go back on up to the City Commission. But that will, at least we'll have something drafted for your consideration. And then we'll have something in the form of an actual amendment language for the City Commission to look at. So they had some concepts that they discussed, but they wanted to refer it back to you to work with us to develop the actual language and limitations. And then we have a replat that's proposed for what is known as the Sutherland Edition. It's where the Olive Garden is located, out on South Ninth Street. There are two platted lots out there, but the Sutherland wants to reconfigure that and create three commercial building lots out of that. And they need to do that through a commercial replat. So that will come back to you at your June 6th meeting as well.
Dean, do we have advanced information as to what those, what businesses those lots will accommodate?
We don't have any information. There is a, there's a lot at the rear. There's an Olive Garden sign, which is actually off-premise Olive Garden. There's a detention basin back there. There's a plan for a commercial building lot towards the back there. And I guess if you recall what Waters True Value looks like, where you have a common road coming in off Ohio with a funeral home and a bank to either side, and then Waters True Value to the back, they're looking to do a similar plan. Olive Garden already exists. There's an Arby's Restaurant proposed on the north side of that. And no identified user for the rear. But the purpose of this is they've, you can split a platted lot one time, and they've already used up their splits out there. So now they're going to reconfigure and design a common entry road coming in off the frontage road.
And at Magnolia and Ninth is Pepper Jack's Grill. And there's another restaurant, I presume, at the old Apple Trees?
As far as I know, it's Alta Beauty that's going into the former Apple Tree Restaurant space.
I had one quick question about the signs. And I suppose if I went back and read Tim Rand's, again, I read it once somewhat carefully. Probably could benefit by looking at the city discussion. But was there discussion about, it specifically mentions, of course, contractors. This would be onsite signs during the duration of a project. Was there discussion about that particular use? And if so, how do you differentiate with regard to content? Was there any discussion?
I spoke with the City Commission about that directly myself. In defense of it, of course, because I was not in support of the motion that was made here at this commission. So, yeah, I brought that up, and I know there was discussion. I listened to discussion about that. But there's been some sense. I don't know that contractors and such turned up. Did they?
There was one.
One? One is all?
Yeah, from Midwest.
Signing, that's right, I did hear that.
So that will be addressed. I'm a little, I'm a little fuzzier on that. But the main justification that you would have for that is it's linked to an activity that's taking place on the site. And so it is a legal permissible activity to have remodeling or construction activity. And if the sign is there during that duration, that is part of it to make it distinguishable from a general business sign. But it's a little, it's a little more clear-cut with the off-premise advertising sign that it wouldn't be limited to just open house or real estate or a garage sale. It would be any type of off-site advertising during a set time limitation. And so you can regulate the time, place, and manner, but not so much the content. And so at least the majority right now of the City Commission is leaning towards being as, worrying less about what the sign is for and worrying more just about the time, place, and manner aspect of that.
So, and this may be stating the obvious, but it would be event-related to an event that begins and ends.
As it relates to the onsite. Because the contractor construction-type signs are describing something that's occurring onsite, just as a garage sale and a for-sale sign is. The distinction is if there's a desire by your neighbor to allow you to place an off-site sign on their property, then essentially that is an advertising sign. And so if you allow advertising signs, we're not in a position to limit what is being advertised. And everyone needs to understand that. So the focus will be on the time limits, the manner, the size, the location, that. And again, it's not, we're not trying to prejudge anything. So we may work with the legal counsel to come up with something that you don't find supportable. So that is within your product. If you've done your best to this point, but the City Commission wanted to go to the nth limit to see what was potentially legally defensible. And so the legal counsel believes it's defensible. But if you allow off-premise advertising signs, we cannot limit what those signs advertise.
Oh, this free speech stuff is so problematic.
So what we have found, at least in our experience, is what is practical is not always legal. And what is legal is not always practical. So that makes this a very challenging subject.
And not always enforceable.
Correct. So we will, but you should, the focus will be on off-premise advertising and the contractor-type signs. Or construction signs, depending on your point of view. So that is what it's coming back for you to look at to see whether you like what we've come up with or not. And then make your best recommendation to go back to the City Commission. But the problem we had last night is we just didn't have anything in a form that anybody could vote on, even if they wanted to. So they decided to let you help formulate what it says before they look at it, so.
Thank you. Anything else? We're adjourned.
Thank you.